I'll call to order the June 5, 2017, regular council meeting and ask those in the audience who'd like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items under special business this evening, the first Agenda Bill 7427, Hall of Fame recognition, and so I'm going to... Well, this is one of the very, very enjoyable things that I get to do every year at about this time, and that's to recognize our latest inductee into our Hall of Fame. Issaquah's Hall of Fame program has been around since 1987, and we're very fortunate this evening to have a number of past recipients here, and I'm going to ask them to come up after I've recognized this year's recipient and just provide a little bit of an overview. The criteria is the one person who has been an inspiration, provided service, leadership, civil-mindedness, and activity in drawing positive attention to the community. Length of service is also a primary component of our Hall of Fame recognition. So this year, Joe, come on up here, and Michelle, why don't you join Joe also? Because I learned a long time ago that no one does it alone, and behind every great person, there is typically another great person at his or her side. So Joe Forkner, a former city council member and longtime community volunteer, a dedicated advocate for our community, and a true example of a community leader. For many years of service to Issaquah in public and private life, he is an outstanding candidate for this year's selection to our Hall of Fame. He embodies the values of, as I, our criteria, civic-mindedness, inspiration, leadership, and service befitting a member of the Issaquah Hall of Fame. Joe has worked with New Orleans government and nonprofit organizations to make our community a better place, including the Downtown Issaquah Association and Friends of Lake Samamish State Park. His leadership roles for the City of Issaquah include serving on the city council, city service commission, development commission, planning and policy commission, and park board. Joe also served as chairman of the Central Issaquah Plan Task Force, which worked with the community for more than a year to re-envision Issaquah's commercial areas along Interstate 90. His volunteer efforts include helping to plan and execute vendors on Front Street, one of Issaquah's signature events, and for many years, he has worked with Sunset Highway Cruisers, a local group that collects cash and toys for local charities. So I'm going to invite, this time, forward those here in the, in the audience that are previous Hall of Fame recipients, Rose and Leo Finnegan, David Harris, Shelley Frye, please come on up and help me induct Joe into this year's... So Joe got a, Joe got a plaque the other day, but this is not quite as nice as that plaque, but it's a certificate of appreciation. In addition, we have a board back there with all of the names of our previous, and your name will be up there. So Joe, it is really a great pleasure to formally recognize you as a stalwart in our community who has done so much for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
(applause)
This is a very familiar place for me, and I have to say that volunteering for this city and serving this city is, has been some of the most fun and adventurous things I've done. And to stand with the group that was here as Hall of, previous Hall of Fame, Hall of Fame inductees makes me feel like I've really accomplished something great by being inducted into this. And I wanted to thank everybody, including the mayor and the council, and thank the community for all of the fun times that I've had and the fun times I intend to have, and for all the things that we can and have accomplished in the past. Thank you.
Joe, thank you again. (applause) Our next item under special business is Agenda Bill 7423, One City, One Center City Update, and we are fortunate this evening to have with us representatives from King County Metro and Sound Transit, and that would be Paul Roybal of King County Metro and Wesley King of Sound Transit, to provide an update on a significant planning effort that is going on at this time, both short-term and long-time. And Bill, do you want to provide a short intro, or just have them begin?
Just a welcome. We encourage to have them come. As a member of RTC, where we first started talking about One Center City, and I wanted to have all the, everybody else on the council get this information a little more directly because it's going to be a large effect on the region as a whole and Issaquah citizens. So I'm happy you're here to, to get everybody up to date so they can hear all this, so thank you for coming.
Great, well, thank you so much for having us, mayor, council, staff, and, and citizens. My name is Paul Roybal. I'm a senior transit planner with King County Metro, and I am the agency lead for King County Metro on this four-agency planning project. With me today is Wesley King of Sound Transit.
Hi, thank you, Paul. I'm Wesley King. I'm the Transit Expansion Program Manager for Sound Transit, and I'm the lead on, for Sound Transit on this project.
So like I mentioned, this is a four-agency joint project between Metro, Sound Transit, the City of Seattle, and the Downtown Seattle Association, so a public-private partnership that's been ongoing through a study over the last year or so to look at how the region moves through, connects to, and experiences the center city of downtown, of Seattle. We have a handout that is in front of the, the members of the council, and there may be a few extras around the room. The, the handout depicts a few key things that everybody might not be fully aware of. First of all, center city itself. What is that? Those are the 10 densest neighborhoods around the center core of downtown Seattle. It is the region, the area of the city that we're focused mostly on, but the effort is really a regional effort. There are about 250,000 people who, who come through the center city on a daily basis. So anything that happens in these 10 neighborhoods really affects the entire region and its viability. The, the project is really looking at a two-fold, two-timeframe scenario, one dealing with the near term, what might happen over the next couple of years as many different transportation and private and public construction projects are implemented and really will change the face of the downtown area. This area is growing significantly, as you can imagine. Currently, it's home to about 70,000 residents and 250,000 jobs, but over the next 20 years or so, there will be about 25,000 additional residents in this area and over 55 additional jobs. Just that growth in itself is going to put some tremendous demands on this area, requiring us to think more creatively about how we use the public space. There is not going to be any more streets built through the downtown area, and so we need to learn to use those streets the most effectively, way as possible, and accommodate as many people as we can through that limited capacity. The, the project, as I mentioned, is over, looking at two different time horizons. In the near term, up through around September of 2018, we're looking at the impacts of all the work that's happening in the area today. We have the, the State Route 99 project that's being built, tolling that will be associated with that. We have work on the waterfront. We have Madison BRT coming online. We have a number of different public initiatives that are underway. And in addition, there's about 70 active projects right now in the city, in the downtown, in this center city area that is affecting both, in the near term, mobility, how people are getting around as these projects are being built, but bringing that growth to the, to the downtown area. And again, as I stressed earlier, this is affecting the region because so many people are moving to and through this, this constrained area. The project, however, has a longer-term focus as well, and we'll be looking out, out towards the next 20 years and all the growth that's going to happen over that timeframe. So while we want to address immediate actions that, or, or develop immediate actions to address the immediate need, we also want to look forward to that timeframe and envision what we want this area to look like in the future, what the mobility needs of the area are, as well as what, how the public realm looks and feels, how people experience the public realm, which is the, the public space that everybody, bus riders, people who drive, people who bike and walk, all experience on a daily basis. So I will shift my focus quickly to talk a little bit about the near term, and what we've been planning for is the, the eventual timeframe when buses will come out of the downtown Seattle Transit Tunnel. This is something that's been envisioned since the tunnel was built. Light rail is coming, coming online, and we've always known that as light rail trains increase in their frequency, there will be less room available for buses to operate through this, which is now a joint-use facility. When those buses come out of the tunnel, we need to find out what to do with them. If they came up and we did nothing, that we would experience a tremendous amount of traffic delay for all users. People who drive, ride the buses, and more people on the city streets, so those sidewalks would be more crowded by people waiting to catch their buses and so forth. That's if we did nothing, and so we're looking at ways that we might be able to address that through a number of different actions that are described on the back, back sheet, backside of the sheet that I handed out. There's really five major areas of action that we're looking at. Street operational changes, potential bus service restructuring, improvements to the pedestrian and public realm, looking at ways to implement the center city bike network, and looking at transportation demand management strategies, how to encourage more people to adopt alternatives to driving alone. Over, we are at the point where we've been in, in an engagement phase for many months now, since, since January primarily, and have talked with over 70 community groups, as well as had an online open house, different venues for a variety of people to give input into this plan, and we've gotten a lot of feedback. One of the things that we've heard most strongly from everybody is to make sure that the system is safe and usable for all, all user types, and that's really something that we're striving to achieve in the near term. And it's a goal that we will continue to have as we develop the long-term work as well. That outreach continues. We will, we are, as I mentioned, developing some strategies that now become actions that we will take forward to the public for more detailed analysis and discussion. I talked about the bus, potential bus service restructuring. We are now in a process jointly, King County and, and Sound Transit, looking at alternatives to the bus service that operates on State Route 520, and ways that that service might be reconfigured so that fewer of those buses come into the downtown area and operate all the way through the downtown. What we're relying on in this case is to encourage people, or require people in some cases, to make a transfer from buses to light rail, and that transfer for the 520 services would use the Montlake, the University of Washington station near Husky Stadium. Other bus restructure concepts that would result in fewer buses through the downtown core would rely on transfers to link through the downtown core, as well as transfer, potential transfers to other high-frequency bus routes that are already operating on the surface streets. That's where we are right now. Over the next year, we'll be looking at the long-range aspect of this plan and developing some ideas, concepts about how that, the public realm and mobility will function in the long term, and we'll continue to bring that out to the public through more engagement, and we look forward to coming back to this group and answering, answering questions and providing more information about that. I'm going to turn it over to Wes just for a second.
I think Paul did an excellent job of covering all the main points of this effort. It really was early on that ESTA and King County Metro and Sound Transit and the DSA started talking and seeing the cumulative impacts of all these projects coming down the pipeline occurring at the same time. We realized we needed to work together, get a joint effort. The last thing we want to do is while we're trying to build better transit systems, a more efficient transportation system as well overall, is to turn people off to transit. So this effort is about trying to expand or at least keep transit access as efficient as we can into and out of downtown. I have a feeling some of your questions off the bat are going to go towards the 554. We have not started that outreach effort yet, and that will be coming this summer. Right now, the focus is on 520. Then we're going to take a step back, regroup, and come with another outreach effort to engage with your community and your riders that utilize that service as well. And I would also add that the 554 is not looked at as a truncation option. UW provides a unique opportunity because there's capacity there, there's good connections with 520, and what we'll be looking at related to the 554 is more impacts related to East Link construction and how that route will have a new route into and out of downtown, but staying on surface streets and, and continuing through the center city.
With that, we'd like to open it up to questions.
Are there questions? Did a great job of setting the stage. Tola?
So, so I want to make sure I heard right. 554 is intended to continue to operate from Issaquah to downtown Seattle. It's just going to be a question of, of operationally where it goes and how, how it goes?
Yeah, the, because the dedicated bus lanes are going to be closing, so then that will require the reroute through there.
Gotcha, but we don't have to, if you, if you want to take 554 in, you don't have to like, take, transfer to a train in Mercer Island or any of that kind of stuff?
No.
Right, thanks.
Okay, additional questions? Bill?
Just checking on if there's any change in the date of when you're looking at the, the bus tunnel possibly closing. There was some discussion on various dates on that, so see if that's still open or where that's going.
It is still open, but we've been planning for September 2018 as the, as the worst-case scenario, the earliest date that the tunnel would close. So all of our, our efforts, our analysis are really around that date, and our project delivery schedule will be working at building these projects and implementing the, any sort of outcomes by that date, September 2018.
I would add, we're keeping in mind that if, if things change, we want the flexibility to change with it. So if 2018 slides, we slide these changes as well. And I think another important aspect of this, especially as we talk about these regional impacts, is that ESTA isn't driving any of these service adjustments or potential truncations on 520. It's through this effort, and we are working with a sounding board and going through the King County Council, the Sound Transit Board, so the normal processes and the normal representatives will make the final decisions on what happens with these.
Bill?
More than, just when you mentioned street operations, that's talking about actually really changing like one-way streets to, or two-way to one-way, or busway, it's like Third Avenue now is currently, you know, buses only at certain times of day. You're talking about street operations, talking about changes of that nature, are you not?
We are. While we've, we've looked at a variety of different options, right now, we're settling on really looking at signal operational changes that will keep the buses moving more efficiently.
Great, well, Bill, I want to thank you for suggesting that we, that we be briefed on this topic, and we are very, very fortunate to have you on the King County Regional Transit Committee and know that you'll be keeping a close watch as things evolve. Thanks both of you all for coming out this evening.
Thank you, and we look forward to addressing you again in the future.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks.
We'll now move to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. There is a public hearing later in our proceedings on the capital improvement plan, including Transportation 2018-2022, and if you're here to speak to that topic, later in our agenda would be the best time to do that. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we'll contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your email address on the sign and sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard at the front table after speaking. When recognized, use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. A visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. A simple reminder, personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Again, citizen comments, both written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take them seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I'd ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
Yes, Susan Haas.
I, I'm sitting down because my feet need that. My name is Susan Haas, and my address is 19524 Southeast 24th Place in Samamish, and my relationship with Issaquah, there are two. One, I make original art and turn it into 100% post-consumer recycled greeting cards that are for sale at the Recology Cleanscape Store in Gilman Village, and also I volunteer on Thursdays at the Food and Clothing Bank. And lately, in the past eight weeks or so, I've been volunteering about 34 hours a week for my interest in saving Providence Heights campus for preservation. It's been a really wonderful experience. I have a master's in regional planning from UNC Chapel Hill from 1995, and this has just been a great way to use that education and also develop it further. And tonight, what I'm really interested in talking about is carbon specifically. This last week, a lot of those hours have gone into reading your words in your goals for the city, the city vision, the comprehensive plan, especially the land use element goals, and the sustainability writing that you've all adopted, and I'm so impressed. I am just so proud to be here and see all the work going on in the Parks and Recreation Department with daylight and creeks and making more opportunities for enjoying the earth in a very like, carbon-minimal way. And I'm really hoping that Providence Heights can turn into something that just grows and develops future city of Hall Famers and metro users, and that it can all fit together. I think that would be just great. So, and with carbon, I, like in all your documents, it talks about having a minimal effect on greenhouse gases and global warming and climate change. It's been so sensitizing to read all that. I've been thinking more about, oh, do I really need that trip, you know, do I, you know? So thank you for inspiring me. What I'm also been learning from National Historic Preservation, Experiser, reuse is almost always better, and in this case it is, Providence Heights in the light of carbon, you know, historic preservation all aside. There's a lot of carbon that went into creating Providence Heights. Concrete is extremely carbon-intensive to mine, to make, and it's also very intensive to demolish. And new construction, it would be more intensive carbon-wise than just reusing what's there and repurposing it. So I know it's a really hard thing to figure out how to do this with all the factors. I wish you had more authority in this, that it wasn't more than a level zero permit, but I am heartened that your planning director has a master's in environmental planning. So perceptual shifts have to do with global warming. People are looking from, and I know this is all stuff, you know, so I apologize, but from the smokestack to the globe, not just localized smokestack effects, but what does this have to do with the global atmosphere, and how does that impact Issaquah residents and employees? And also incremental changes. How does one little demolition affect the whole planet and whether it survives or is destroyed? And also with exponential feedback loops. It's just a perceptual shift. When you have ocean acidification, greenhouse effect, climate change, dark water without ice absorbing more heat, methane from the melting tundra where it was locked in, frozen, it's coming out, and it all, it all feeds on each other and can create some exponential effects. So I'm going to send, this geyser tomorrow, a couple of documents to, to just add to this talk. And also tomorrow night from 7:00 to 8:00, there is a public gathering at the Issaquah Library in the larger meeting room for anybody interested, any of you or anybody who's watching this on TV. Thank you so much.
Susan, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Christensen?
Hi, my name's Steve Christensen, and where'd the mouse go? Oh, there it is. Okay. And I'd like to, I live at 23416 Southeast 17 Place in Samamish, and I would like to show you this slideshow on the Sisters of Providence and also on Providence Heights. Thank you.
Come, open your heart. Show your mercy to all those in fear. We are called to be hopeful for the hopeless. So hatred and blindness will be no more. We are called to act with justice. We are called to love tenderly. We are called to serve one another. To walk humbly with God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Paula Harper Christensen?
Good evening. My name is Paula Harper Christensen, 23416 Southeast 17th Place, Samamish. And I live very close to Providence Heights Chapel. And after watching that, it must have been a true hallelujah moment to finally open that campus to women for those Sisters of Providence. In the past several months, many of us have been deeply drawn to the Providence Heights campus. We've been looking to it with future possibilities as a historic site, repurposed school, museum, wedding venue, women's shelter, conference in our music hall, child advocacy center, art center, and countless other possibilities. It's made me even greater appreciate the 12 years that I was blessed to worship in that chapel with my church. And it truly has heightened my appreciation for the city of Issaquah and the city of Samamish. We have a number of charming historic sites like Gilman Village, Front Street, and the Pickering Barn. In fact, it was 1983 that the Pickering Barn was listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. And in 1994, the good city of Issaquah had a vision to invest $2 million into the restoration of the barn. And it is now our own, very own landmark that buzzes constantly with weddings and art shows and farmer's market. I love it. But to get real, it's a barn. It's not a chapel with magnificent 30-foot stained glass windows by world-renowned glass artist Gabriel Luard. It's hard for me to say that D-word, demolish. But I'm pretty sure it would cost an even greater fortune to demolish it than it would to buy it in the first place. Here's an example. Port Authority of St. Paul spent $3 million on a piece of property. And then they had sticker shock when they discovered the cost of demolishing it would be $13 million. Instead, they repurposed the building, which turned out to be really good for the economy and certainly good for the citizens. Providence Heights and the Space Needle were under construction at exactly the same time. I've been wondering what Washingtonians would be saying if we were trying to D-word demolish the Space Needle. Some people come from all over the world to visit us, to visit Pike Place Market, to visit Pioneer Square, Seattle Underground, and none of those places are as lovely or as serene as Providence Heights Campus and those 40 acres. Last month, in May, in the Seattle Times, there was an article about what happened to civil rights leader Rosa Parks' home. After Rosa Parks refused to give up her seat on the bus, there was quite a hoopla in Alabama, and certainly the hoopla was accompanied with many death threats. So many death threats that she was forced to move to Detroit to live with her brother. She lived there in a little tiny house, wooden house, square, salt box type. And after she died, for years, people have been discussing what to do with her house. Well, museum, teaching tool, Center for Children, nobody could really decide. Finally, someone did just, see the yellow light, did just purchase it, took it down, dismantled it piece by piece, took it to a new location, rebuilt it. And the new location is Berlin. Yep, Rosa Parks' home is in Berlin. The Berliners love it. Jazz music is played and children tour, and they learn about Rosa Parks. I can't help but think we let a real gem slip through our fingers. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
No one further has signed up to speak?
David?
Good evening, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. You have an agenda bill being referred to the future about the county island. It's actually county property and WASHDOT property. A while back, I spoke and said I thought some of those trees on the more eastern part could come down to make sure we had some kind of park facility on the western part of the Highlands, so kids didn't have to cross busy streets to get to the parks that are still a distance away. But I didn't imagine the CFF zone for that property, which, as it says in the code, it's "for services and/or recreation oriented development that serves a larger community includes uses that generate high levels of traffic." Conference centers, reception halls, public-private projects are all listed. It seems real inappropriate to look at that part of that property for CFF zoning. Certainly, the top part there is more realistic, the recreation zoning CFR. The open space zoning is certainly appropriate for this, the highly visible slope. There has been some tree death up there in one place at the northwest corner of the forest, and not, it could be laminated root rot, which is common around here. It could be something else. But, you know, the whole hydrology has been changed dramatically up in the Highlands in that part. Camp Creek was there, a flowing creek, coming out of the hillside before the Highlands project was ever started. And then they tried to put too much water in that area and it blew out, and now it's back to some kind of a flow. But there's, springs have been, been on that hillside for a long time, naturally. It goes way back. But then there were a whole bunch of springs in an unnatural situation when they were charging too much water up above. But we got to make sure the forest and the hillside can stay green and healthy. At the bottom, certainly some things can happen down there that would be not interfering with the view corridor and could be well-used properly if done correctly. But that top part doesn't belong in CFF zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Because it's quasi-judicial, it complicates people actually getting a tour or whatever of that site. But I think it's really important that every council member somehow get up and be familiar with that, that land at the bottom and the top. Thank you.
Washington. I wanted to come before you tonight because I wanted to first address my car that I sent in last week, and I appreciate the city responding quickly on it. But I'm really concerned because every car that we've submitted from our development, we've never got to talk with the city before action is taken, and really never had a chance to review after it's happened. And it's kind of closed quickly. And I, my second part of my car that I submitted was not responded to at all. And so I'm following up in that, yes, I did visit the site this weekend and would like to show you, and this is on the skatepark for those of you that are in the audience. And the car requested that the city look at the crosswalk at the intersection of Newport Way and where the new skatepark was going up. And my concerns was that pedestrians cannot see and cars cannot see pedestrians waiting to cross. And I requested that that be looked at, the sightlines be improved for not only the pedestrians but also for the cars using that intersection, because it's a heavily used intersection, and cars can be going over 30 to 40 miles an hour along that stretch of the road. I know, I drive it every day. What did happen is the fence got moved back slightly. But I took this picture from where I recommend people stand when you cross the street, especially on a busy intersection. That's my viewpoint as a pedestrian from that intersection. This is after the sidewalk or the fence was moved back. What I asked was that they look at removing some of the screening to improve the sightline. I didn't really ask for the fence to be moved because I know that is a construction site. None of the screening was removed. Here's another view where you can safely wait to walk. If you begin to get towards the sloped area where you're actually in coming in contact, could potentially be hit by a car, this is still the view. This is if you are across the way and want to make a turn out of the parking lot there to make a left-hand turn. This is your line of sight, where you're required to stop by law to wait to stop. Now, yes, you can edge forward, and you begin to see a little bit more. But by then, you've committed yourself. If a car has not stopped or you're making a right turn on red, you're hit and you're in danger. I would request, going forward, when citizens submit citizens' actual requests, that they are contacted, they are talked to, and when they volunteer to go and visit a site, that they, that request is accepted. And before it is closed and nicely, we're done, you know, thank you, that the complete car be addressed. I would like to see for this one in particular, what decision that was made, what standards, this is based on that the sightline is adequate for the pedestrians, what codes were used, what city standards. The other thing that I've requested several times over the past year is what construction site safety inspection guidelines and best practices the cities are using. Because if you walk along our street, Newport Way, right now, we cannot safely get from our entrance over to the trailhead. There is no walkway that is safe. We were told when construction was going to start on Newport Way that we could safely get to the trailhead. And it's just not our neighborhood that's using the trailhead. It's other ones along that way. So, when we submit cars, I would appreciate some respect, and when we ask for requests or specifics on when a decision is made, on what standards, codes, and decision that's based on, I would request that's included with the follow-up. Because I have no idea who decided what decisions were made and on what standards that's based. So the next time I see something like this, which I've already done three times in the past two years, it happens over and over. It's getting tiring and very concerning that our concerns are not addressed and our requests for information on when decisions are made and on what facts are based are not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else this evening? Steve?
Hi, good evening. Steve Perera, 170 Northeast Dogwood Street, for about nine and a half years. So I guess, three things. I might congrats to Joe Fortner for his contributions to the city and for all those who have contributed, so that's worthy of a shout-out. Next two issues, the first were, was the Providence Heights preservation. As mentioned, there is a meeting tomorrow from seven to eight in the Issaquah Public Library Meeting Room. Just kind of good background for you and for anybody who might be listening, there was a public hearing that was held on May 31st at 10:00 a.m. The public hearing examiner found that there were some discrepancies in the appeal process, and a new meeting has been scheduled for July 11th at 10:00 a.m. And folks are encouraged to attend that. One of the things that was found to be at odds were there wasn't an appeal of the demolition process. So I just think that there's, if this is going to happen and the approval of the not to demolish the site, it's going to take a lot of hard work and effort and commitment from people. from people and from cities of Issaquah and Samamish and perhaps King County and perhaps state-level, some philanthropic efforts. So it's going to take a lot of good efforts. We just wanted to praise you of the status and to anybody listening, if you have a homeowners' association or some other community meeting, please feel free to reach out to us, and we'll try to go there to inform you and invite you and involve you in the process, because we think there's a cultural heritage site here that's worthy of preservation. So just wanted to give that appeal real quick. The second issue was, is the vertical mixed-use issue. Now, Council President Goodman, it seems like you've been the kind of the leading advocate for this site for a number of years, so thank you for that. One of the questions I keep hearing is, why has this worked for sites like Redmond and Kirkland? And one thing that occurs to me is that when I think of Redmond, I think of Microsoft Headquarters and campus, and I think more people with more disposable income than us. I don't know, I'm not an expert on the area. I do like, again, Council President Goodman, and others have asked the question, why has it worked for Redmond and Kirkland, but not for us? I don't know the answer, but I like...
Steve, I'm going to ask that. Do you direct the whole council?
Okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to criticize anybody, I was just giving kudos for leading that effort, so thank you. I think it's a worthy effort to consider not just looking at the results being vertical mixed-use, but how do we get a community gathering spites and community involvement? So I think that needs to be the focus going forward, not just measuring whether we have vertical mixed-use, but how do we get this thing as a community amenity? So I look forward to the approval of the request that's pending later this evening for that further study of that site, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else? Seeing no one then, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Mariah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 17th, I attended the Issaquah Schools Foundation Breakfast with many of you. As always, it was a great event, describing all the important work done by the Issaquah Schools Foundation. Also that same day, May 17th, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Meeting in Bellevue. There was a presentation given regarding best starts for kids, and then just a lot of work on bylaws and policies. The June event, we've talked about it before, but I just wanted to give the information. The June event, sponsored by the Eastside Human Services Forum, is on June 14th at 4:00 p.m. in the Old Redmond Schoolhouse Community Center, and that is titled "The Growing Opiate and Heroin Crisis: Moving From Awareness to Action." So that's an important date to remember, really hoping to get a lot of participation at that event. And the next meeting is September 20th, Bellevue City Hall at 8:30 a.m. Also upcoming is the Economic Development Council's Board Meeting on Wednesday, June 14th, in Bellevue. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the Infrastructure Committee. We last met on May 18th, and the items were discussed, one of the big ones was the Newport Way 900 to 54th, and brought that up, and that is in the process of our new public engagement policy process. And so I definitely want to encourage folks, there's two workshops coming up on that these next two Wednesdays, the 7th and the 14th, from 6:30 to 9:30. Those are going to be working workshops, so we're encouraging, this is to really dig down and go to, not just show up for one, but both of them. They'll be continuing working, so if they can make both of them, it'd be great to really get their input and follow through. It'll be a progression of work, not just two separate events. So want to encourage as much participation in that as possible. We continue working on our complete streets, policy program and budgets. We'll be working on that a little more before we bring it back to council. And the other item wanting some information on was the Transportation Advisory Board. The status of that so far, it's been with us for a while, and we've been working, trying to develop things. There's kind of a lot of questions in how that works. And where we are now is that the original agenda bill that came to us had, basically the goal was discussion and development and where that would go. So at this point, we've gotten to a point where we have a draft, if you will. So we work with administration to, they're preparing a new agenda bill to just close out the old one, which was discussion and what we're going to do, and actually bring forth a new agenda bill back to council. So the plan is that hopefully, I believe, on the 19th, it'll come back to council with referral back to infrastructure and finalize the details on that and back to council here, maybe the end of July or first of August, approximately. So it's coming back. It took a while to get some of the details down. I think we've got them corralled pretty well, but still, we're going to put some polishing points on it and bring it back to you all. And the last bit on that information is, I remind everybody that East Lake Samamish has a closure coming up this Friday through Tuesday, the 9th to the 13th, so please remember to plan, because you can get on the freeway if you're heading from the south, and you can get on I-90, but if you're coming from the north, you cannot. So plan your routes this Friday through Tuesday, please. And then, and the next council infrastructure meeting will be on the 15th of June. The agenda, we have not set the agenda yet on that. That will be coming up shortly. On the 17th of May, I was at the Regional Transit Committee, and we work in there, one of the main things we're working on there is fares, changing the fare structure, and we're getting towards that. We're not finalizing that yet. Also add discussions on parking and alternative services. On the 9th here, I will be attending the Cascade Earthquake Resiliency Workshop. It'll be part of my Emergency Management Advisory Council work. It'll be an all-day event in, I believe, in Maidenbauer. And so I'll be there doing that, and so I will probably miss the ETP that morning. So I'll talk to our mayor about covering that one. And then on the 14th of June, will be the actual Emergency Management Advisory Council meeting at the emergency center there in Renton. And that, I believe, concludes my report.
Those dates again for the full closure?
Full closure is the 9th through the 13th, which is Friday through Tuesday.
No, actually it's...
They changed.
Well, June the 13th to the 19th, full closure of East Lake Samamish Parkway. The comments that Bill made, including adjusting your route a week later, but some extra time to plan for it.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 1st, last Thursday, there was a meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board, and the main item on the agenda was our ongoing discussion and debate about the regional centers framework update. This particular meeting just focused on what are known as manufacturing and industrial centers, also known as MICS. So a MIC, like a regional growth center like we have, are two of the types of centers that are, whose framework is being updated. So there was just discussion, there was the working group that had made a recommendation of actually three proposals to update the MICS. Didn't have a clear favorite, though it's actually quite elaborate, but there's alternatives A, B, 1, and B2, and it seemed that our SCA caucus seemed to favor alternative B2, and the comments through, from most of the GMPB seemed to favor alternative B2. I'm looking at Mr. March, because I know that for SCA, it'll probably go back to the PIC for some conversation as well on that recommendation. But this was just a discussion. There's many months away before any policy decision, including time for it to go through the PIC. Also on Thursday, June 1st, we had a meeting of the Lodging and Tax Advisory Committee, or Commission. In 2017, this council appropriated, among other things, from LTAC, $50,000 for event recruitment marketing. And this coming month, later in the month, the Association for Volleyball Professionals, or AVP, will be having an event at Lake Samamish State Park on June 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And the LTAC approved spending up to $13,000 to co-sponsor a welcoming hospitality gathering of athletes and sponsors the evening before the event on the 22nd, with the aim of convincing everyone that they want to come back and do this event next year. That was LTAC. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Tola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Services and Safety Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, June 13th at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. The agenda is still to be determined. The next night, Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will meet at Renton City Hall. We're going to have a pre-PIC workshop on the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy. King County Council transmitted a plan forward, 12 cents per thousand assessed value. That represents about 140% increase from the 5 cents per thousand that was previously. As I've mentioned a little bit earlier, it's now Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy, so there's an idea that there's an expansion of what that levy would be for, but I will be getting more details at the PIC next week. We'll also be discussing regional centers, and I'm eager to hear about the B2 option and see what that all entails, so that should be a good conversation. And then there's also a discussion of Regional Transportation System Initiative. So those are the major topics, but there are no items explicitly called out for potential action at the meeting. It's just discussion updates and informational items. Then the Regional E911 Strategic Plan Scoping Leadership Group will meet on Thursday, June 20th. We're going to receive a draft of the technology group report, and GMPC is still a ways out. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Eileen?
No report this evening?
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 1st, I stood in for Council Land and Shore Committee Chair Goodman, who is absent, on the Land and Shore meeting, and we had three items that night. AB 7215, combined with AB 7417, was a discussion of the Ninth Major Amendment to the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement and the use of transfer development rights by Polygon, and also the First Amendment to the WashDOT or ParkPoint TDR Development Agreement. There were two proposals that were put on the table for the committee to consider. Proposal B, because A was put aside quite a while ago, proposal B was the use of 100 transfer development rights that would create additional affordable housing units on top of the 100, 38 housing units, and some construction of market-rate homes on a city-owned parcel called Track D. Proposal C, that was also presented that night, was the use of 100 transfer development rights on Polygon's property with 10 affordable units included in the 100 TDRs at the 60% AMI level, and did not include any construction on the city land parcel D. The committee voted 2 to 1 in favor to move forward to the council with proposal B, and that will be on a future council agenda in June. Second item was AB 7110, Windward Bergsma Development Agreement. The committee voted 3-0 to ensure that connection between Talis and the proposed Bergsma property, if constructed, would only be emergency access, would be emergency access only. And they also voted 3-0 to deny the development agreement, which used a clustered housing provision. And so that is going to come to a future council meeting as a request to deny that development agreement. Last item was a discussion, vertical mixed-use. Staff brought a presentation in with a recommendation to review a scope of work and a proposal to hire a consultant to complete the work, and that is actually on our agenda this evening. The next meeting for Land and Shore is unfortunately soon. It's June 7th. There are far too many Land and Shore meetings this year. On Friday, May 19th, I attended the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Meeting. Myself and the city administrator took questions on road closures and progress on the moratorium work plan items. On Saturday, May 20th, I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Fireground 101. This is an event at the Bellevue Training Facility for elected officials, and it will be hopefully going forward an annual event, and different members representing the city on Eastside Fire and Rescue's Board are encouraged to attend next year. On Wednesday, May 24th, I attended the Cascade Water Reliance Board Meeting. On Tuesday, May 30th, I attended the city's post-audit meeting. And later in the afternoon, I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Finance and Administration Committees Meeting, and the topics that were discussed that day were fire, chief performance evaluation and compensation, and also a discussion of the Capital Facilities Maintenance Fund. And new business was a discussion of a board policy looking at criteria for adding additional partners to EFR. The next EFR board meeting will be June 8th at 4:00 p.m. at headquarters on Newport Way. And just a heads-up for the other members that serve, looking at the calendar, it looks like the August EFR meeting will be canceled at this point in time, so you can take that date off your calendar. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Land and Shore meeting is June 7th at 6:30 here in council chambers. On the agenda for that night, moratorium update, which is a standing item. We also have three items that are scheduled for action. The first one is Agenda Bill 7316, Sustainable Building Action Strategy. Second one is Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan, and the third one is the regional agenda. We also will have a discussion of the Central Issaquah Dashboard. I also wanted to thank Mary Lou for chairing for me last week, and Tola for rounding out the committee of three. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be calling Hall of Fame recipient Barb Justice, who unfortunately I failed to recognize at our Hall of Fame ceremony earlier, and give her my most humble apologies for that oversight. There will be an executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing potential litigation per RCEW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. This item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. I'm sad to share the news that Ernie Smith, the former Issaquah City Council member, recently passed away. Ernie served on the council in the 1980s and was active in our community as a youth sports coach and a member of the Kiwanis Club of Issaquah. On May 25th, the ribbon was cut to celebrate our newest amenity at Confluence Park. That includes a pedestrian bridge and playground with designs chosen by our community. If you've not had an opportunity to visit Confluence Park, I certainly encourage you to do so. It is a real gem. At Costco Saturday morning, someone stopped me to tell me how great that project turned out, and so I would encourage you to do so. On May 25th, I attended the Sound Transit Board Meeting, where we approved several projects related to link extensions and amended the adopted 2017 annual operating budget to accommodate resources needed for sound transit, parade. And I attended, along with Bill Ramos, the PSRC General Assembly Meeting, which includes all mayors, county execs, and commissioners, and council members of PSRC, members jurisdictions, and the four county areas of Snohomish, King, Pierce, and Kitsap. At that meeting, Snohomish Exec Dave Summers was elected to chair the PSRC for the next two years, and Executive Danamire from Pierce County. And that concludes my report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I would ask if the accounts payables and payroll for June 5th, 2017, have been reviewed?
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, I would ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts payables and payroll of June 5th. Items B, C, and D seeks approval of the minutes of the city council... of the minutes of the city council work session of May 8th, the special work session of May 10th, and the regular meeting of May 15th, with a correction to page 7845, striking Eastside Fire and Rescue Resource Committee and inserting Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee. Item E, AB 7352, 2017 Second Budget Amendments, seeks to set the public hearing for June 19th and referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item F, AB 7419, inter-local agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for tactical emergency medical support, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item G, AB 7429, surplus city equipment, seeks approval. Item H, AB 7437, 2017 Maintenance Overlay Project, seeks to award bid. Item I, AB 7438, Puget Sound Energy Green Direct Power Service Agreement, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar for separate consideration under regular business? Stacy?
I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to public hearing, Agenda Bill 7313, Capital Improvement Plan Including Transportation 2018-2022. A brief introduction from our Finance Director, Jen Olson, before I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight's agenda item is a public hearing on the proposed 2018 through 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. The council has been discussing under a first work session about the proposed capital improvement plan, or some refer to it as the capital budget. The plan objectives are to support community vision for growth and service levels, ensure planning effort changes with demand, and provide for a financial assessment of funding sources that are available or not necessarily available, and to maintain a high level of service infrastructure for the community. The proposed five-year plan is estimated at $188,215,366. This covers capital investments in a number of different categories, from technology and systems, capital equipment, municipal facilities, parks and recreation, trails, transportation, and the utilities. The capital, the proposed capital improvement plan for this five-year period is available on the city's website for review. Funding sources, then, that are proposed to accommodate or for the five-year plan come from a variety of sources, and those include REIT mitigation dollars, grant sources, developer contributions, cash on hand from and through the utility operations. Those are business enterprise funds, which have revenues coming from ratepayers as well as those capital connection charges, donations, internal funds for fleet, IT, general cash on hand, or contributions coming from the general fund for a particular capital project, and then funds coming from streets operating or cash on hand. The final category of proposed sources include the potential for issuing debt in order to provide for those capital investments that are included in the plan. And those needs are, for the 2018 through 2022 period, the five-year plan, it's identified in the proposed plan that approximately $35 million would be needed for park and recreation-type capital investments, and $46 million for proposed transportation improvements. There are future years that are identified in the capital improvement plan. That is to provide for a big-picture look at the investments that may be needed for the community. However, the plan is identified as a five-year plan with a future five-year outlook. The total 10-year outlook has identified almost $250 million in bonds that would be needed, and that would be addressed as the council's going to go through future work sessions and other discussions about the capital budget. These were the questions that had been identified at the council workshop. They would still be the questions that the council will be entertaining as you continue to go through the deliberations with regards to the capital budget. So certainly ensuring that capital investment priorities are met, the role of debt in financing the capital improvement plan, and then, of course, the organizational capacity in order to complete projects in a timely manner. So with that, again, tonight's is the public hearing to take testimony on the proposed plan. The next meetings that are set for discussion on the capital budget is June 12th in a council work session, and then June, or excuse me, July 17th. That would be the continuation of this public hearing, and that is, would be for consideration and adoption of the proposed capital improvement plan. So with that, I would recommend then moving forward with public testimony.
Jen, thank you very, very much. Just a reminder that the guidelines for public participation or audience comments are the same as I earlier outlined. And with that, I'll open the public hearing at 8:17. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
Are there anyone who has not signed up to speak, desiring to speak this evening? Mary?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I already had sent some comments into you earlier when this was, I think, presented the first time at one of your subcommittees. But one of my concerns is that the priority of some of the park projects that are in place there with putting so much emphasis on Central Park and the build-out of Central Park, and thus needing to have all the street improvements, and turning Central Park into a regional park, I am highly concerned about that because it's, number one, spending a lot of park funds up front versus elsewhere in the city, especially with the central area plan, what's coming onboard over in the western region where we still don't have a park. Would like to see the priorities put, and some of the other areas that don't have parks. I think they should look at that before you put so much money in the central area park. And then that, in turn, demands infrastructure to be built there where the infrastructure has not been completed elsewhere. Because if you look at that, Providence Point Light is still way out there. What I also noticed this time around is Newport Way is still pushed out there, and my concern is with Newport Way from S-900 to South 54th, we really should have the funding to do that when it's all being done by the developers, because it makes sense to do it all at once. It's much more economical, and from a living out there, it just needs to be done at the same time, and you ought to be looking at funding it so it does happen at the same time. The other thing that seemed to have fallen off the list, and maybe it stuck back in some of the others, but I couldn't find it, is the rest of Newport Way from South 54th to the Western Gateway. And in reading the central area plan and the last concurrency model, Newport Way, that end is, the concurrency is all based upon it having a center turn lane. And if that road is not complete, then you're out of concurrents. And so to drop it off completely off the list, you're already admitting that you're not going to be concurrent. And we know it hasn't been funded for a number of years, so we've really been out of concurrency for a long time. But I'm highly concerned that that just had completely dropped off the list. So I really think the priorities of both the parks and the transportation need to be looked at as priorities. The other thing I couldn't find any place is the PFOS and that whole issue that seems to have all of a sudden gone back underground. We were supposed to have, I thought, a review study of what was going to happen, and we've got rental equipment. And then I thought we were going to have to purchase long-term, and I don't see anything mentioned in the CIP that was presented. Now, maybe it's in there, and I missed it because there's a lot to read, but I'm highly concerned that it's not, what's going to happen with the filtration system has not been identified, and the big capital cost to make that an ongoing effort has not been identified. The other thing is the mixing and blending for the central area. We've been identified that that's going to have to happen, and I still think the city should be looking at how to remove fluoride from the water we're going to get from Cascade, because I don't think we should be having fluoride in our water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Steve, were you leaning forward?
Same things I said before still apply, still with the same place. So as I read through the TIP portion of this, several thoughts occurred to me. One was, there's, in the listing is a guidance that talks about a numerical score and a level of determination of how soon we want to do that. I'd like to see in the documentation what the metric is that uses to determine whether, what that score is and what it gets done, so that it's better for transparency, for having, be more visible for what we want to improve. When I was at the Policy Planning Commission meeting, one of the things I heard was, we make these scores, but a lot of times things come up and get approved that aren't in the higher-rated items and get done because things get moved around as funds get moved around. And I think from a transparency and a public conversation, there needs to be better communication of what that is and how the process is, so citizens don't get blindsided by having a low-priority item done while bigger items don't happen. So I think that process needs to be looked at better and more thoroughly. One of the things I would like to see is there were a number of items that talked about connecting communities on both sides of I-90. Those seem to be some lower-score items. I'd like to see those consideration given to be moved up, so we work better as one community, not just as individual pieces. So I bring that for your consideration going forward. Two of the things that I guess I didn't like on there that I would like to see removed, because they don't really talk about moving transportation as much as others. One is the widening of northeast Dogwood Street, and the other is the proposed parking structure for 400 cars, which I think don't really move people. Those two items, I think funds could be better used in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else desiring to speak? Second call, anyone else? Third and final call, seeing no one then. Audience comments are closed at 8:23. And Stacy?
I'd move to continue the public hearing to the July 17, 2017 council meeting.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
The public comment that we heard tonight is somehow summarized and attached in the next version of the bill. Just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, we publish minutes of the meeting and after those. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing to the July 17th council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business item, Agenda Bill 7390, Financial Management Policy. Jen, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Butler, and council members. Tonight is the kickoff for discussions on updating the financial management policy. A proposed draft has been provided with the Agenda Bill as well as the current financial policy for your review. I'm just going to do a brief presentation as this is a kickoff, and the action tonight is to refer this to council work session. So financial management policy serves as our operational guide for administration to carry out city council strategic intents. The policy is intended to define courses of action as well as establish parameters. So those are targets, those are benchmarks, those are in the proposed policy. And in the format that we use for the capital budget section was, the red font are the areas for specific, specifically for council to address, while certainly the entire language of the policy is for discussion, but those are the key areas that we want to focus on, on setting those parameters. The current financial policy is certainly adequate, but best practices are telling us that perhaps we need to provide some updates. And to establish comprehensive policy, you'll find from the current to the proposed, there are, it's realigned, there's additional sections. It's intended to specifically address subsections of sections according to the Government Finance Officers' Association best practices on financial policy. And that is a very new guidebook for local governments with regards to our fiscal policy. So just a brief overview about the proposed policy. There are goals in financial management policy to attempt to achieve, and those are to set forth financial principles, to reduce our risks, to maintain capacity for levels of service, to ensure that we are legally compliant through the use of internal controls, and to provide financial transparency to the public. So overall policy goals for financial management policy, very important. One of the things I wanted to do was to provide just a brief overview of some of the changes from the current policy to the proposed policy. Again, we'll be meeting in work session to start the discussions on those proposed changes. But certainly with regards to policy, we always want to ensure that we have the right level of flexibility versus control. There is an expanded reserve guideline section, and this is something that I will loop back to after my presentation here about a risk assessment. There are separate and outdated policies that are intended to be combined into one comprehensive financial management policy, and that will be identified in the work session discussions. The expenditure section is new. There's a simplified purchasing authority and commitment levels that are proposed. Budget scope and basis is proposed to change for financial policy. New section on cost allocation plan. This is a very important piece that is required, and auditors certainly like to tackle that as topics when they are doing their audit and testing work. The proposed policy refines the debt section, investment policy, long-term financial planning, and internal controls. These are the next discussions that are scheduled. So certainly tonight, we've got an introduction and referral to the council committee work session on June 12th, July 10th, August 7th is a council meeting, and that is a public hearing. The August 14th council committee work session, and then it is intended that the public hearing be continued from the August 7th to the September 5th, and that would be where the council would be considering full adoption of the revised policy. So I wanted to circle back to, also in the Agenda Bill, was information about risk assessment. That is, in the reserve section, our current policy states that it is based on best practices. Best practices, we have a bit of an update, and what that means is that reserve policy should be essentially defined based on the unique needs of the community. And so the GFOA has prepared this pretty neat tool called the Risk Assessment, and a sample of that was provided for the council with the Agenda Bill. So it essentially provides for a way to do some brainstorming, do some thought into the various areas of risk. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to assign the council some homework, and for you to read through the assessment, I can, I'll be sending it electronically to the council, because at the end of that assessment is a way for us to put some numbers to, is to be able to quantify where is your individual council member level of risk at. We'll combine those. And one of the ways, and one of the reasons that I use that assessment, is that what we can do is we can come up with a quick look into what is the can do is we can come up with a quick look into what is the combined level of risk. We get to a number, and we can plug that into where's a proposed level of reserve for the general fund. And so that essentially is a quick way to do that. There's certainly more conversation with regards to setting reserve policy and to setting reserve targets, but this is one way to start the discussion on what are the risks associated uniquely with the city of Issaquah, and then we can continue to discuss how that final policy reserve section looks. So if there's no questions of the council, I am pleased to be able to kick off our financial management policy update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Stacy?
I do have one question. I'm glad you brought up the risk assessment. I guess it's just a sort of a questionnaire. And I was reading through the questions earlier today, and I think as I read these, I felt like maybe I was, didn't know that I was the right person to be answering many of these questions. So for example, what are sources of potential expenditure spikes? It seems to me that that's a, something that the administration would answer. What is the potential cost of the spikes? I wouldn't know that. Those are just a couple of examples, but I think I would suggest that perhaps, I don't know where, I don't know who else is going to be filling out this assessment, but I can't help but think that the council shouldn't be the only ones providing the information.
You're correct. The council is, council members are not the only ones providing that information. It is also and will be distributed to members of the administration to provide their thoughts into the assessment. And so the method for seeing administration is certainly that the council would see that and to help you if you do have questions about some of those, because it is one of those things, exactly as you said, is that you may not know those things, but when we have that discussion about what are some of the examples of where you would see expenditure spikes, things like unknown repair and maintenance, so those would be sources of expenditure spikes. But certainly if council has questions about what is, what does this particular category or type of risk mean, I certainly welcome a phone call, email, certainly be happy to meet with council so that you have a real clear understanding of any of those questions that are in the risk assessment. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none then, Stacy?
I move to refer Agenda Bill 7390 to the following meetings for review and recommendation, June 12 work session, July 10 work session, August 7 regular council meeting with a public hearings open, August 14 work session, additional work sessions if needed, and returning to the, a city council regular meeting on September 5 with a continued public hearing and consideration for adoption.
Second?
Questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7433, Annexation of King County Island and Establishment of Preannexation Zoning. The zoning element is quasi-judicial, and as is the next Agenda Bill, and I'd ask the city attorney to just provide a brief refresher on what quasi-judicial means.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to do that. Council, the city, as indicated in the staff reports, is treating the preannexation zoning associated with the annexation resolutions before you tonight as quasi-judicial. In that context, the council will essentially be acting in an adjudicative role, essentially as a judge of the proposed zoning measure rather than in your usual legislative policymaking role. And as a quasi-judicial measure, there are certain rules, excuse me, under state law that should be followed to ensure the appearance of fairness. Specifically, the council should, to the extent possible, avoid any ex parte communications or one-sided contacts with proponents or opponents of the zoning. And to the extent that those communications do occur, at the time of your preannexation zoning hearing later this summer, you'll be asked to place the substance of those communications on the record for purposes of rebuttal. I would also advise the council against making any public statements that could be construed as indicating some type of bias or prejudice with respect to either the measures themselves or the proponents or opponents of the zoning.
Thank you very, very much. Are there any questions of Zach? Seeing none then, Trish Hayden from Development Services, our long-range planning manager for the staff report.
I don't have a presentation tonight, but I'm here to answer questions. It's a very straightforward annexation that actually you've seen before, but in 2000, you approved us moving forward, but then King County backed out. So we're trying it again, as you're aware. We're in the process of getting that site to help us with our transit oriented development project that we're working on, and so this annexation resolution is in front of you tonight.
So just to add to that, the proposed resolution that you will be considering would allow the city to proceed with the annexation process. Specifically, the resolution declares the city's intent to annex the King County Island, includes the boundaries of the annexation area, states the annexation area will assume its prorated share of the city's indebtedness existing as of the effective date, sets two public hearing dates for consideration of preannexation zoning, sets a public hearing date for the annexation hearing, and authorizes the administration to proceed with the annexation process by submitting the notice of intent to annex to the Washington State Boundary Review Board of King County. And with that, are there any questions or comments? Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trish, I think you were here earlier when we had some public comments on the annexation. Are you able to answer those questions for us tonight?
The question on why the zoning is the way it is, that, or the-
He had several questions, I didn't write them down, though.
That was the one that I heard was why are, the middle is open space but the top is facilities, and that's what I had learned through the Transit Oriented Development Project, that was the map I was given. So I'm not sure. I just knew that it's facilities.
Stacy?
So if I read the Agenda Bill correctly, this is, the resolution would approve an intent and would allow the mayor to move forward and submit the required notice of intent to annex the, to the Washington State Boundary Review Board, but this also would go to land and shore.
Correct, and I could find out that, the answer to that question by land and shore.
July 6, which-
I would actually find it out before the first public hearing on the zoning.
July 6.
Which is July.
And the resolution is about an intent, and it's to, also to consider establishing preannexation zoning of community facilities facilities. So approval of this Agenda Bill starts the process.
Correct.
Which will be public.
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear, that this doesn't set any zoning, approve any zoning, it starts the process.
Correct.
And I want to make that clear. It also would come back to the full council for public hearings July 17 and September 5.
And September, correct.
One of the comments, if it's approved, one of the comments I would make is that I don't see anything in the agenda packet that has the definitions of the community facilities, facilities, or the CFOS, or the IC.
Right. And that would be coming for the public hearing that's actually on the preannexation zoning. You would have all that information. This was just to get started, just to do the start.
So I think that-
But we'll put that in the-
The hearing is a little late since it's going to land and shore, that information needs to come to land and shore.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Bill?
Just I noticed on the map that one piece does, is not indicated what the zoning would be.
That's the washed out right of way, and right of way is not zoned. So it'll be updated, that map will show that it's right of way in the future. But that's the right of way parcel that's described in the Agenda Bill. Good catch.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none then, Stacy?
I move to approve Resolution Number- 201706, declaring the council's intent to consider annexing an area commonly known as the Bellevue, oops.
Excellent.
It's back. Oh, sorry. Too many of these. Approve Resolution Number 201706, declaring the council's intent to consider annexing an area commonly known as the King County Island and requiring the same to assume its share of indebtedness, declaring the council's intent to consider establishing preannexation zoning of intensive commercial community facilities, open space, and community facilities, facilities for the land within such island, setting two public hearings for public input on the preannexation zoning, zoning, and one public hearing on the question of annexation, and authorizing the mayor to submit a notice of intent to the Washington State Boundary Review Board for King County, and two, refer AB 7433 to the July 6, 2017 council land and shore committee for review and recommendation, returning to the full council for related public hearings on July 17 and September 5, 2017.
Second?
Moved and seconded, Paul?
An additional request, Trish, so as the packet evolves, please include, if you can, a map that shows the topographic relief, so with the contour lines, so we can see slope, and perhaps even a satellite-type view as well, so we can actually see what kind of vegetation, what's on the ground there now. It would complement the map that's in the current packet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stacy?
And similar information on the surrounding adjacent properties, zoning and current uses, please.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of the motion as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to our next item under regular business, Agenda Bill 7442, Annexation of Bellevue Utility Island and Establishment of Preannexation Zoning. Again, the zoning element is quasi-judicial. And with that, Trish, are you going to speak to this one for us?
Right, this is a fairly straightforward one. As you recall, we assumed the Bellevue Water and Sewer District, if you will, in January, and this is the site of the Lake Simamish Reservoir, that is the little blip that's not in the city limits yet, and so now that we've assumed Bellevue's the water and sewer in our city, now it's time to bring that parcel under our jurisdiction. So it's a very small little parcel with a very big reservoir on it, and it's the same question as the King County Island, but a lot, there's a lot less to it since it's just a little two-acre parcel. But I'm here for, if you have any questions.
Mary Lou?
So Trish, we've already assumed the utility itself, so we're already responsible for the water tower. So is this something that we forgot to do, or just it's such a different process that happens later than the assumption of the system itself?
When Brian Overman in Public Works was trying to trace when the other pieces around it came, it looked like we didn't annex it when we were annexing different parts, and then it was in Bellevue, Bellevue owns it, owned it, and so now was the time that we thought we'd just clean it up and make it part of the city.
I don't remember seeing this parcel before.
Right, it's very, very tiny on the map. It's just like a little, a little dot up there that's not in the city limits.
Stacy?
I'm going to make a motion, but it's the same, same deal, it's a proposal, and the motion would refer it to, among other things, refer it to the July 6 land and shore meeting. I move to approve Resolution Number-
201707.
Declaring the council's intent to consider annexing an area commonly known as the Bellevue Utility Parcel Island and requiring the same to assume its share of indebtedness, declaring the council's intent to consider establishing preannexation zoning of community facilities, facilities for the land within such island, setting two public hearings for public input on the preannexation zoning, and one public hearing on the question of annexation, and authorizing the mayor to submit a notice of intent to the Washington State Boundary Review Board for King County, and two, to refer AB 7442 to the July 6, 2017 council land and shore committee for review and recommendation, returning to the full council for related public hearings on July 17 and September 5, 2017.
Second?
Moved and seconded, questions? Paul?
In case you were wondering, no, I don't request a topographic map with relief lines for this, just in case you were wondering.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was even trying to get an aerial view to see the reservoir, and it's really hard to actually find a picture that shows it because there's so many trees.
Stacy?
I would again request that the definitions of the, and not just community facilities, facilities, but-
Surrounding.
But the definitions of the other community possibilities, even though they may not even be appropriate, at least we have all the information.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the motion as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7435, Vertical Mixed Use Consultant, Jen Hayes Development Services for an introduction of this one, and excuse me, it's Jen Davis Hayes.
That's okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Jen Davis Hayes with Economic Development, and I am here to talk to you about the scope. You have the scope for a vertical mixed-use consultant in your packets. We've been working on the vertical mixed-use project as part of the moratorium, actually a little before the moratorium was enacted, to look at why we weren't getting vertical mixed-use within the central Issaquah area, and as a reminder, these are the product, project motivations to move forward. We have been to council several times over the past year to talk about the research findings that we hired Eco Northwest to look at the actual market data, so we wanted to make sure we were getting information about the actual construction costs, the rental rates, et cetera, to better understand why this building type isn't being built here in Issaquah. And basically, the results showed that the, according to the financial model, now it's a model, so it's not applicable to every single parcel, but that for the model, basically the extra cost that it requires to build that type of building did not, did not, was not covered by the rental and the operating income for, to lease out the residential and the commercial space on the bottom floor. So we went and explored different options, everywhere from looking at alternatives to encourage through some incentives, or also regulate or required in some areas. And at the last discussion, I guess at the May 4 discussion rather, of the land and shore committee, it was requested to look at getting additional expertise around the vertical mixed-use discussion because it, as the more discussion we had, it was determined that it wasn't so much about the building type itself, the residential with the commercial space on the bottom, but make, ensuring that we have all the pieces in place to ensure its vibrancy. So when a building is built, that it has, it may be, that it needs a certain amount of sidewalk width to be successful, it needs to maybe have some streetscape elements that need to be successful, it needs to look at public amenities to be successful. So we went and got a consultant scope and worked with Crandall Arambula, who was working on our- who is working on our architectural fit work. And they have, they have done a really good job at determining the needs of the central Isiqua plan area and what, what concerns and issues we're addressing. So we worked with them to develop the scope. And so here's the, the general purpose is again, to look at the vibrancy. And I did not change this from last time, but it says mixed use, but it should say vertical mixed use. So we're looking at the vertical mixed use community within central Isiqua. And at the end of the work, they would come back with recommendations that we would then implement into code or policy or such. And just to let you know that we are under the schedule to be completed and back to you as full council on September fifth to adopt any changes in the vertical mixed use. And if we go forward with this scope of work, the, the timeline would change. And our final presentation for adoption of code or policy changes would be on October sixteenth. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
Mary Lou?
So it might be a little bit of a confusing question, but as we're sort of learning with all these components of the moratorium, that there's significant overlap. And when we first started the vertical mixed use thing with the consultants, they had presented a graphic to us that showed a dollar per square foot for apartment renting. And if you hit the certain number, it meant that you had the density to support it. And we thought originally that with some of our new projects in town like Atlas, we're going to be at that number. And what we found out was that Atlas built fewer large apartments. And we actually shifted down the graph a bit and fell out of that range of where vertical mixed use might make sense. Is there a possibility when you're looking at a strategy on how to do it, that you somehow bring housing density into it? That there's a crossover between if all we ever build is large apartments, it's just never going to pencil out? And so that vertical mixed use success actually is linked somehow to housing and density? And I just, I'm asking that because we saw the graph move. And I was really disappointed when that happened because that meant that we were years and years away instead of a few years away.
Yeah, and I'm not sure when you say we saw the graph moves after Atlas was built, you're saying?
No, when we saw an earlier version of the graph and it talked about, I can't remember the numbers, two dollars and thirty-five cents a square foot versus two dollars and fifteen cents a square foot.
Okay.
And at one point, we had assumed that some of the new projects coming in, like Atlas, would hit that mark and move that little center part over. So that vertical mixed use then could be a possibility. But when they came back and they looked at actual construction, they found out we never actually slid that far over. And I remember hearing an answer to a question, why didn't we make it over there? And the answer was because we built fewer larger apartments in Atlas instead of smaller apartments. If there had been more smaller apartments, that line would have moved.
Yeah, I don't remember that, that question or answer, so I can look into that a little more.
I guess, I'm just wondering about the crossover with housing and density. Is there a nexus with that, that somehow while they're looking at this, they also have to consider population density?
So population density, yes, because when, that's looking at who's around and so basically who's your customers.
The services, yes.
So the, the, the look of confusion in my face a little bit is these numbers are by square footage. So it wouldn't matter if it was one, you know, two apartments at eight hundred square feet or one apartment at sixteen hundred square feet, because it'd be the same, you know, it'd be, this is the current market rate and then also the cost for construction per square foot. So, but I do understand, like obviously, if we have larger apartments that a studio may not rent out for exactly, or a one bedroom may not rent out exactly for a half of what a two bedroom does. And so that does play with the...
Somebody provided that answer at one of our things, that the reason we were actually, and it could be Econ, Econ, I can't remember who did it. So that's why we slid this way.
Yeah, I remember that sliding, I know that we, we looked at multiple things that talked about financial feasibility, but I don't remember the sliding for that, but I can...
No, and I'll just leave the question on the table. It's just that when the housing strategy come back, comes back, if there's a linkage with the, the stock that we're building, then that's something we also should take into consideration in code. Otherwise, we can do whatever we want with the vertical mixed use code. If we don't have the density, it's still not going to come.
So the density, I guess, we, we did talk about density as part of the initial study. And that looked at the population density of the area. So, but I don't know that we looked at the housing unit size, but that's something I made a note of.
Thanks.
Other questions or discussion? Stacy?
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Crandall Arambula for consulting services and direct the finance director to include sixty thousand dollars in a subsequent twenty seventeen budget amendment utilizing funds from the general fund.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any additional questions, Paul?
Jen, could you make a comment, maybe you did earlier, about this date and how, also how it's related relative to our timeline for the moratorium? Because the next, the current six month period will expire on what date?
I believe it's September fifth or sixth. And so, so that is, I think, a further discussion that we plan on having, that, that needs to be had regarding, from what I understand, so all the topics are actually on different timelines, right? So parking is coming forward in July for approval, architectural fit, August. Affordable housing will be after the September fifth deadline as well, as well as district visions. And so I think the conversation is, it will be had if we are far enough along in the work plan that you feel that it's, you're confident enough to remove the moratorium. You'd like to amend it for another month or two or a different option. So that's, I think, part of the discussion that will happen regarding the moratorium itself. So you have, obviously you have the ability to lift it at any time, but you want to make sure that the things are addressed, of course.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody on the council was aware that the timeline presented here and how it, what it was relative to the current timeline for the moratorium. So we were actually, essentially, you know, dates can change, but we're, we're giving a green light and approving some funding for a timeline that does bring this in after the current six month period expires.
Yes, that's true, thank you.
Stacy?
So for some reason, I had in my memory that there would be something back to the council in early September because the expiration of the moratorium was early October. Didn't know that it expired in early September. In any event, I think one of the items that needs to... September sixth is when it expires? Okay, so it needs to be on the work plan for the council to, to consider at some point whether they want to extend the moratorium to cover, make sure that it's not lifted before summer, all of the items are complete.
Yeah.
Mary Lou?
Jen, so this is the one item, were there, in the original timeline, I thought there were some items that weren't going to be completed until November, December.
The district visions and Trish's left was, I believe it was November, but we might have been able to push it up a bit. The affordable, the housing strategy, affordable housing piece is, I want to say September twenty first, and that's by memory, not by having in front of me. So that was again, after the November, I'm sorry, September twenty first, after the September sixth date. That's, you know, the moratorium expires. So the, the vision piece, I'm not sure exactly where that last thing stands, maybe I could, yeah.
Hold on, and then a general comment.
Sure, so I seem to recall this came up, I was sitting in Atlanta last week, and this came up. And there was something about December, there was something that was going to be done in early December because Keith mentioned December, because I remember thinking, oh, good. Because, you know, some years we don't have a lot going on in December. And this will make sure that our Decembers are, we don't have to think too much about Christmas or other holidays because it'll be focused on council work.
And I'm looking at Tisha to know she knows, schedule her at all. But I, again, that, that's, that, we are actually updating the calendar pretty much weekly. And so that piece, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, looks like we have an answer.
And so that was my comment. We'll provide the council an updated calendar on the different work products and completion dates as envisioned at this time. Other questions or discussion, Mary Lou?
Just a comment about the calendar update, I think that'd be really helpful. Can we keep the original dates in though too, so that we can see how things have changed?
Sure.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Well, I wholeheartedly and very excitedly support this tonight. Thank you, Jen, for being such a trooper over the last few months as we struggled with what to do. And I, for one, made it pretty clear that I struggled with knowing what to do. It's not my area of expertise, expertise. I think that this has been needed for a long time. And just very, very glad that we're going to be digging into this with some outside help so that we can get this done right. So thank you.
Yeah.
Mary Lou?
Last question for Jen. Jen, so when the work products come out and we see a report or a study or a final paper, before the moratorium is lifted, is there code in place?
Yeah. We would, we, when we come to the final piece here now, you know, scheduled first October.
It would be, yes, because we're going to be going through Planning Policy Commission
and, and Land and Shore to, to make sure that's all vetted. So yes. So that, you know, so as you look at, when we come back to the council work session on August fourteenth, we're going to be, you know, really busy for that month, getting revised from what we heard from you as well as then going back to Land and Shore and kind of saying, okay, this is what we, we are now looking at and getting that code actually written and making sure it's ready.
I just asked you because Keith mentioned something about the September date in Land and Shore that said that if we were far enough long, along, there might be a request to lift the moratorium and allow the rest of the schedule to carry out. And so is that not the intent?
Well, September is after the moratorium end, or officially ends, so I'm not sure.
He made it sound like that if the work products are far enough along on September sixth, what we might decide to do, the staff might propose we lift the moratorium and enact the code in the months after.
Yes, that, that is an option. Again, if you feel that we're on the right path because we've already been through, for any of the topics, for the affordable housing strategy.
That's why I brought it up, because if you look at the schedule, it looks like code's in place before the moratorium's lifted. But what Keith made it sound like is that that's one of two options. Council could release the moratorium without any code in place.
You could decide to do that, yes. Yeah, you could decide tonight, you know, at any time. But I guess the, the, I think, I believe that Keith was saying that if you feel like you've seen enough work that you know it's on the right path and feel comfortable that we're going to address the issues, that could, you know, you could decide to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on the motion before us? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the motion as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. We will now move to good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, do we want to make an announcement about the council retreat? What's happening this weekend? There's a council retreat happening this weekend.
There's a council retreat this weekend. Team building exercise Friday evening, the public notices have gone out and the actual retreat itself Saturday morning up at Swedish Hospital.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Anything else for good of the order? Seeing none then, we will move into executive session. This executive session is being held this evening for the purpose of discussing potential litigation per RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero per N one, per NI. The item is expected to take approximately fifteen minutes. Action is anticipated to following, to follow an open session. With that, we will move into executive session. session. With that, we will move into executive session. We are back in our regular session, coming out of our executive session. Stacy?
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the proposed interlocal agreement with the Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District regarding the southeast 62nd Street Extension Improvement Project in substantially the form presented to council, together with such minor revisions as the mayor may deem necessary and appropriate.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That concludes our business this evening. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, we are adjourned.